Good evening, welcome to our Monday November 26th on the OTB. So nice to see so many people here and we hope to enjoy Thanksgiving at this point. Um, we would like to ask Mr. Donner, Mr. Donner?
I do have a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would ask the Secretary for a roll call.
Please let the record show that all Commissioners are present.
Thank you. And moving on to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a Commissioner who would make, who would like to?
I'd like to move to approve with one correction. Um, on item, I guess it's the public hearing item two, the action should be motion carried four zero one.
All right, is there any discussion?
I would second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that? Well then, is there a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
All right, and a second. And then it carries, um, they will be?
Well, we need a vote.
Oh yes, that's right. I just want to move ahead here. Uh, all right. As far as the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting October 22nd, 2018, would you please vote?
Is this place?
Yeah. Yes, easy, show of hands. Okay, there's one abstention? And there are four ayes. Okay, thank you, and we will make note of that, please Madam Secretary.
Yes.
All right, moving to public comments. And this is for folks that are here, not for a specific item that we have later on, but for at this time, under public comments, anyone wishing to address the planning commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the planning commission secretary prior to an individual being heard by the planning commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of fifteen minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the planning commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any slips for right now, Madam Secretary? Moving on to the consent calendar, there are no items on the consent calendar this evening. Which brings us to item two, with a public hearing for a minor conditional use permit, site development to allow for the destruction, construction of a duplex with a tandem parking and for walls greater than thirty inches visible from the public right-of-way in the residential duplex RD fourteen zoning district at three four four one one. The applicant is Ricky Barnes. The address is three four four one one Villa Gomez. I will then ask for the staff member who?
Good evening, oh, sorry. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is the Villa Gomez duplex and applicable entitlements. Just to get everyone oriented, the before you is the lot there on Villa Gomez, uh, closer on the block towards Villa California. You can also see, uh, the, uh, street shot of, uh, of the vacant lot and it's wanted to show this because it's, uh, important feature is those two very mature existing palm trees there on site, um, in which the architect who's here this evening has done a great job in terms of their design and layout to ensure their protection and, uh, and preserving them through construction. This is, as noted, a vacant lot in the RD residential duplex fourteen zoning designation is primarily surrounded by other duplexes and single-family residential units that have been developed over the last forty years. The new duplex proposed requires a minor site development permit. The retaining wall over thirty inches visible from the right-of-way also requires a minor site development permit and then the tandem parking configuration, configuration request is a minor conditional use permit, but the zoning code requires it to be approved by the planning commission, which is why we are before you this evening. Just like to highlight and will show throughout that the proposed project is consistent with all applicable Dana Point zoning code requirements. So here is our, uh, site plan. Here you can see the two-car garage and then the one-car garage with the area for, in the driveway for the additional fourth car, consistent with, uh, the layout as designed by, or as shown in the exhibit, uh, in the zoning code. You can see here in the new approach that the applicant is, uh, providing the required three-foot setback from the existing palm trees and, uh, a lot more than that on this set as well. So they were very strategic in terms of the placement of that new approach to not impact those trees. Uh, in terms of some elevations, the top image there is what will be visible from Villa Gomez. It will only appear as a one-story structure from the street as the project, while not a, um, it does not qualify for a, uh, the hillside ordinance, it doesn't meet the percentage in terms of slope, uh, and thus no project is, uh, no portion of the project is stacked more than two stories, uh, but it does go, it has been designed to flow with the, uh, slope of the property down towards the rear of the site. To highlight, the, uh, structure has been designed at the front there, you can see the wood, uh, roll-up garage doors, but you can see the, the overhang on the one corner on the left of the two-car garage and then it gets to a deeper inset to the single-car garage to provide some architectural relief as well as you can see the, uh, landscape island that they created between the two garages. Here, I'd just like to highlight again, technically, these are our thirty-inch high, over thirty-inch-high retaining walls within the front yard setback from certain angles from Villa Gomez, there will be visibility of these walls, uh, though, uh, minor, as I said, because the site does step down. So, again, there is visibility, but it is very minor, so, uh, staff is supportive of that. This is a view from the backside of the parcel. Uh, you can see here in this corner is the low point of the site in terms of where height is measured from and then from this point to the low point, it does not exceed twenty-four feet. So because of the flat roof nature, the proposed project, uh, is compliant with all applicable height requirements and, uh, has also provided the necessary, uh, private open space. You can see the lower covered patio below, the balcony, and then this upper deck above this as well. So just in summary here, you can see in the highlighted, uh, in the bold that the proposed project does meet all applicable development standards. It has the rear setback of twenty-six feet, seven inches from the living space and then the ten feet from the pat, for the patio cover off the rear, the twenty-four-foot maximum height from the lowest point of the site. And again, they've designed the project to step down with the site and does provide the required four parking spaces in the tandem configuration and you can see at the bottom that private open space requirement as well. In conclusion, again, from Villa Gomez, it will appear to be only one story that's consistent with other structures and the eclectic architecture of the neighborhood, the modern design with high-quality materials on the materials board that is, uh, I know was passed, uh, to the planning commission this evening, shows that it will be consistent and enhance the overall neighborhood. They are requesting no exceptions to the development standards and meet all parking requirements and the retaining wall will only have minimal visibility. With that, staff has reviewed the findings for the minor conditional use permit and minor site development permit and determined that all the applicable findings can be made, including consistency with development standards, visual compatibility with the surrounding development as well as consistent with surrounding uses. Thus, staff does recommend the planning commission approve the minor conditional use permit and minor site development permit, subject to the findings and conditions provided in the draft resolution this evening. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to address any of the planning commissioners' questions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Do we have questions by the Commissioners?
Sean, just a quick question. The slope of the, of the site, everything goes down away from the road and there are homes behind that, how's the water, the water flow, how's that captured?
So, they, uh, engineering has reviewed it in terms of their preliminary grading plan and there is a sump pump that's proposed and that's very similar to several other projects that we have all throughout the community, but that was, uh, one of the issues that was worked out preliminarily in terms of location and size. Engineering is, is, is content with what the area they've shown for that potential use and then during the final engineering review plans, that will all be again verified and ensure that the appropriate devices are installed.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple, Sean. Um, I just wrote a note to myself and I can't find it, but, um, in the conditional use permit, in our write-up, it was saying that conditions of approval thirty-two and forty-five are included in the draft resolution to require a tandem parking agreement management plan and landscaping in the front yard setback. I saw that condition thirty-three was for the tandem, but which one was for the landscaping in the front yard setback? The reference is forty-five, but forty-five is penetrations and openings. So I don't know if that was supposed to be fifty-one, our landscaping is illustrated on this middle final landscaping plan?
It is, I apologize, it is, uh, a condition approval fifty-nine.
Oh, fifty-nine? Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And then? One of the conditions was, um, sorry, that vines be planted and irrigated at the base of the walls to grow vertically on the walls to reduce their visibility. When we were just looking at that, it looks like there are stairs that go down, so how are they going to plant something at the base without, because I don't know what the width of the stairs is, if it's just code compliant, you really can't plant vines there at the base of the stairs.
So if we look at, she, you can see it on the site plan here, I can show it right here, it kind of shows up, but there is a, there is a small area at the base of the, uh, wall there, there's a landscape area that can be planted and that is better shown on sheet, uh, L one zero. You can see that they have a gravel ground cover there shown at the base of the wall, which is, uh, between the stairway and the wall and so it was in that gravel-based area that staff envisioned that, uh, small vine pockets could be created and irrigation provided.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner McConaughey? Okay. I just wanted to point out that I'm very happy you're, you're taking the, uh, I mean, you're keeping the, the trees there, that's very important.
The applicant was very adamant about that in his design as well, so I'd like to compliment, uh, Mr. Walz in his design of that.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And it, it's indicated that from the, the street, what we will be seeing is then off of Gomez, it will appear to be one story, that is correct?
That is correct. It's this top elevation right here is what you will see. As I turn off my mic, is this top elevation here is all you will see and the plate height here is about a nine-foot-high structure.
Okay, as we go down in the topography? The very bottom portion of the rendering, I guess that is, yes, that we're looking at now, but which is the, eh, the bottom?
Yep.
I assume that the first level is for the, the first duplex. The second level is a single, is a single structure. I mean, it's not, not a single structure.
So, I think this may help, uh, here's a, a cross-section that will give, so you can see here, so here's our garage area here. So this is off the, the ground, this comes right off the street. So you hear, you have the, uh, living area for, uh, unit A and then there's some additional living area up here for unit A and then, uh, the living area here for unit B. So again, it's only one, two stacked and then one, two stacked, but you can see that unit A is more towards the front and then unit B is the small area that has access to this patio and covered patio in the back here as well.
Okay, and that access is through the, the stairs that are going down on the side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you. Anyone else? All right. With that in mind? Get back to where I was. We, at this point, would open it for a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? All right, hearing none. We will close the hearing and we will move to Commissioners' discussions. Who would like to speak first? You guys have too much turkey? Really quiet.
No comment on the turkey quantity consumed. I can't say enough good things about this design. This design, uh, it appears to me on a really, really challenging set of criteria to comply with, was able to create something really beautiful and really efficient and really well thought out and functional for the future users of this duplex. So, um, I will gladly be voting in favor of this, although I can't do it on my screen because my screen appears to be broken. But, uh, anyway, I think that it's fantastic. Um, I am in agreement with the minor site development relative to the wall height issue. I think that's fine, um, so that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Opel?
I totally agree with, uh, Commissioner Scott. We have, uh, I think this will be a great improvement to the neighborhood and, uh, it's, uh, gonna be, uh, really well done and, and it's gonna add to the, the quality of the neighborhood. Congratulations. I plan to vote for it.
Commissioner Nelson?
Uh, no, I agree with my fellow Commissioners and am in support of the project that they took a pretty tough site. When we typically see projects like this, there's just requests for relief and variances and, you know, they've taken all these challenges and really built or developed or going to develop a project that seems to, to take into account some of the natural topography, uh, while still creating a, a unique design on that street. So I'm in full support of the project and would also be voting in favor of it.
I think you and I as well, eh, eh, very much support, um, I happen to live up in that area and I think this is a great, a great, uh, progress up there, so it's very, very, done very nicely and obviously was not an easy project to begin or work with, I'm sure. So, that said, is there a motion?
I move that we approve minor site conditional use permits, CUP seventeen double oh one five M minor, site development permit, SP, SDP seventeen oh oh four M to allow the construction of a duplex with tandem parking and for walls greater than thirty inches visible from the public right-of-way in the residential duplex RD fourteen zoning district at three four four one one Villa Gomez.
Thank you.
I would second that.
Thank you. And at this time, we will vote again with hands raised.
So it's called for a vote?
Yes, all those in favor, raise your hands, please. Aye. Thank you, it passes. Thank you, sir. Wonderful project. That passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item three. And at this, this is the coastal development permit, CDP one eight dash zero 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 nine for a three hundred and twenty square foot addition and remodel to a legal non-conforming house in the residential single-family four zone located at eleven Monarch Bay Drive. And who is our staff member? Is it Mr. Siampa?
Yes.
You're up.
John Champ, I'm the case planner for eleven Monarch Bay, the Burge Residence. The property is located within the private community of Monarch Bay and wa, is within the residential single-family four zoning designation. The existing one-story, three thousand square foot, single-family residence and attached two-car garage was constructed in nineteen sixty-three. The site is located within the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal commission, um, and within the coastal zone and is therefore requiring the coastal development permit. Just to give you a little background on this property, the structure is considered legal non-conforming because it was constructed with a rear yard setback of twenty-two feet when twenty-five feet is required and also because the garage interior depth is nineteen feet when twenty feet is required. The project is not requiring a minor site development permit, given that the expansion is less than one hundred square feet, or, I'm sorry, ten percent of the gross square footage of the single-family residence and it demolishes less than fifty percent of the linear length of the walls for the structure. This is the existing conditions of the property. As you can see here is the, the architectural design is modern, uh, with a one-story, uh, single-family, which is very common within the community. Project scope is for a three hundred and twenty square foot addition and remodel the single-family residence that would expand the living area to three thousand three hundred and forty-seven square feet. The addition is to enclose the courtyard, which is in the center of the house, to create a dining or office room. The interior remodel that's also incorporated in the project design would reconfigure the kitchen and family room to create a more open, uh, floor plan design. The project has been reviewed and approved by the, uh, Monarch Bay Homewards Assist, excuse me, Homewards Association. As you can see on this slide, uh, the addition is located in the center of the home, um, filling in the courtyard area. It would not have any, uh, exterior modifications to any of the setbacks, uh, as they exist today. As you can see, this, these are the elevations, there's no exterior modifications to them as it's centrally, as the addition is centrally located in, uh, the courtyard area of the home and it would not project above the existing parapet. Here's a cross-section, uh, which was provided in your plans, as you can see, uh, of the new dining office area and the skylights above, which are located below the parapet, uh, the existing parapet of the structure. Project is requiring a coastal development permit as previously stated because the project is located within the coastal overlay, within a private community between the ocean and the first, uh, public road. Project complies with the requirements of the coastal development permit in that, uh, it does not impact any public access or environmentally sensitive habitat area and it complies with all the necessary requirements in the city's certified local coastal program. Project meets all the required findings, as stated, that it complies with the requirements of the local coastal program, the city zoning ordinance, and all the necessary findings identified in the coastal development permit requirements. Staff is recommending approval of the coastal development permit, subject to the conditions, uh, included in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
All right, are there questions from the Commissioners? Okay, uh, hearing, no questions. Thank you, Mr. Siampa, and we will take a vote on this. Oh, comments, thank you, yes, first we will have comments. Who would like to start?
I think we have to open it up for public comment next.
Oh, yes. All right, so we are open for public hearing. I didn't think so. We have no public, okay, no, uh, public hearing, so we will close the hearing and now we will open it up for discussion.
Madam Chair, I would, uh, you know, I'm in support of the project. I think when we have old structures, we need to continuously improve them in town and, you know, I love it when people come in and preserve their project, their homes and, uh, renovate them and, uh, in support of the project. It's, uh, not exacerbating the existing non-conformity in, in any way and so, you know, for that and the fact that it meets all, uh, the codes and requirements, uh, per the staff report, I'm in support.
Thank you. Boyster?
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Nelson, uh, I think it's a good project and the, uh, fact that the, uh, it doesn't affect any of the surrounding homes and it's improved the property, uh, I'm, I'm all for it.
All right. Commissioner Opel? Commissioner McConaughey?
I'm in, in agreement with, uh, comments that have been made. I think it's a great project.
Thank you, I am as well. I think it's nice that we continue to get the homes renovated or repurposed in some degree from when these were first brought to the county of Orange before, of course, Dana Point was a city, so there is a little transfer there, but, uh, yeah, it's very, it's, it seems to be the perfect fit and, uh, with that, you ready to vote? All those in? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve coastal development permit, CDP eighteen dash zero 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 nine for a three hundred and twenty square foot addition and remodel to a legal non-conforming house in the residential single-family four RS four zone located at eleven Monarch Bay Drive.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. All right, are you ready to vote? I guess hands up.
Aye.
If that passes, five, zero. Thank you. And thank you. We are moving on to? Number four on the agenda. And that is? We do have a speaker on that. Would the speaker like to come forward? Oh, yes, presentation first.
It's on me now. Good evening, Chairwoman Murphy, fellow Commissioners. Thank you for hearing the item tonight. So tonight's project is a request to permit the establishment of an administrative office use on the ground floor of a building currently under construction within the Dana Point Town Center Plan located at three four one five five Pacific Coast Highway, Suite Letter A. So the, uh, subject site is located at the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and by the lantern, within the city's town center mixed-use, uh, town center plan area. Suite A, which is shown, uh, in orange there, is located in building number three, uh, shown in yellow and is part of the larger mixed-use project known as the Prado West Development. Prado West Development, as you may know, uh, contains a hundred and nine residential units, uh, thirty-two thousand four hundred and nineteen square feet of ground floor commercial space, uh, and two separate two-level subterranean parking structures. So the subject administrative office use, uh, which is a bank, is proposed on the ground floor suite of a three, of the three-story mixed-use building within the suite's primary frontage and access is taken from a violet lantern, as you can see on the left there and then highlighted again at the bottom floor there. Pursuant to the land use matrix within the Dana Point Town Center Plan, administrative offices, office uses may be located on the ground floor with the approval of a conditional use permit. And as you can see on this image, uh, the, the doors and the frontage being shown here is a long violet lantern. Uh, there are no doors located on the PCH North elevation. Okay, so the project proposes the establishment, as I said, of an administrative office use within the ground floor suite, which is, uh, currently under construction at the Prado West Mixed Use Development. The proposed operator of the?
The proposed operator of the administrative office use is Chase Bank. In consideration of the proposed project, staff focused on the allowed uses and the design requirements of the ground-floor building frontages in the Dana Point Town Center Plan. Historically, banking institutions were designed and functioned more like administrative office uses. Several decades ago, banks typically were closed to customers in the early afternoon to allow staff time to complete daily accounting and administrative functions, and, uh, local branch, branches usually housed more administrative office staff and office functions. Over the years, though, banks have evolved and administrative office banking functions have been centralized through advances in online banking, and are now more commonly placed in larger office centers. As a result, local bank branches function more like a commercial retail space than office use. The, the branches offer an array of banking products and services to walk-in customers, including the sale of investment services, loans, equity lines, currency exchange, and automated teller machines, ATMs, uh, which are shown on this, uh, this, this area, this ATM vestibule, which is off Violet Lantern, highlighted in red here. This branch, as I said, it'll have this twenty-four-hour ATM, uh, in red, which will remain open, uh, to the interior during normal business hours, and then will, that, that, that door will close, uh, during, uh, off-hours. So under the Town Center Plan, banks, as I said, are committed, are considered an administrative office use, and they're permitted on the ground floor, subject to the approval of this conditional use permit. Uh, staff has considered the proposed bank use, and it believes it will positively contribute to the city's Town Center. So the proposed bank use results in minor impacts, and the conditions in the attached draft law resolution ensure that the use will encourage more pedestrian-oriented mixed-use businesses within the Town Center. Staff has determined that the project is consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point General Plan, the Dana Point Zoning Code, and the Town Center Plan, and the required findings articulated in the draft resolution of the subject entitlement request can be made. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP eighteen dash double oh fourteen, subject to the, uh, conditions contained in the attached draft, draft resolution. That concludes my presentation. Uh, I am available, as well as the applicant, for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giomarelli. Questions by the commissioners?
Yeah, Danny, could you go back to the slide showing the floor plan that had the forty-foot setback or, on there?
That's the slide you're referring to, correct?
Well, do we show one that has that forty-foot dimension on there, 'cause?
You know, we don't have a slide that has the forty-foot marker. The forty-foot would be shown from the building frontage here. Uh, the forty-foot line, um, let me see, actually, did create another slide. That was not part of the presentation here. So this shows the forty-foot, this area here, this is, this is roughly where the forty-foot line is. Obviously, this isn't scaled, it's part of the presentation. This area in red would be, would be the location.
So inside that area, there's no, essentially no administrative office function, is that the idea here?
Correct, yeah, and some of the teller stations, which are located back here, are outside of it. There is a potential proposed gallery, uh, location here. Obviously, the ATM vestibule, like I described, is more of a retail use, um, seating areas, uh, types of things in that location.
Okay, so this, the forty-foot restriction, I read this right, occurs on Del Prado and PCH, and it's only that first forty feet?
Correct.
Of the ground-floor space. Otherwise, this would be, so no matter what, under the current code, you would need a use permit? And that use permit would only be granted if we didn't, among other reasons, they would not be granted the right to do administrative office functions in this first forty feet?
That, that is correct.
Commissioner Nelson, if I could clarify too. The code, uh, says it's forty feet off of frontages on PCH. This project does not have a frontage on PCH. It fronts onto, I'm sorry, Violet Lantern. So the language, uh, where the forty, uh, feet issue becomes even relevant, I, I don't think even applies here.
Okay.
Uh, this, you know, slide was put together to show what it looked like from PCH, if there was a frontage there, but, again, there isn't one there.
So if, in a, if, if we applied this with an abundance of caution, we would be, if someone argued that this was within that forty feet?
Right.
Still not, they're not operating per?
That, that's the reason for this slide.
Got it, okay, that's what I wanted to just clarify. Frontage is actually on Amber Lantern, on this building?
Violet.
Sorry, Violet Lantern, okay. And then where would the parking be for this, for the uses on this building?
Parking is maintained on-site within the two subterranean parking structures. Uh, that is part of the larger Prado West Development. It's accounted for in the, in the development.
And then, one other question here. Are there any, is there a second-floor commercial component here?
Uh, there's not, there's residential above.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, uh, Feister?
I have the same question, but that's all clear now, thank you.
Thank you. It's Opal. I had most of the same questions, but could you confirm, did you state that the ATM would only be open during bank hours?
The ATM will be open twenty-four hours a day. It's located inside of a vestibule, which has access to the interior during normal operating hours.
Okay, I misunderstood that.
You can see, uh, this little, uh, hashed line here, there'll be a door, and then, obviously, the door's here. Uh, so during normal banking hours, you can access and enter through here, as well as this entry here, which is the main entrance. And then, after normal operating hours, this locks and this maintains open.
Okay, I just misunderstood. And then a follow-up on, um, Commissioner Nelson's question on parking. Um, is there going to be any designated parking? Looks like there's some stalls right outside on Violet Lantern. Is there going to be any designated parking there for either ATM use, bank use, or is it all just?
It's, it's public parking, uh, as part of the, uh, the development. This street, uh, directly across will be maintained as parallel, and then, uh, these, these new, uh, spots will be, uh, will be created. Uh, there hasn't been any talk yet as to whether or not there'll be some dedication there for, uh, ATM use or loading or something like that, but certainly something that we can find out.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner McCon?
Thank you. You said there's retail spa, or residential space above. Is there, is the residential space over the ATM lobby, or is that open to the sky?
I believe there is some outdoor area there. I think Kirth, uh, may, may have more of a clear representation of that.
It'll be, it'll be covered, there'll be no access or any noise impacts to the, to the, um, to the residents above. As Danny was stating, when it's an off-hours, um, members of the bank can only get in through their ATM card. It'll open the door, and then they go in and transact their business, and then, then exit. So it'll be totally enclosed, and, you know, later in the evening where, where noise may be an impact.
Okay, great, thanks. And has there been, has, has, has there been any discussion of, 'cause there's a couple other chases nearby. There's one in Ocean Ranch, and then there's one down in the Gelson Center. Has there been any discussion of consolidation of those, or, no, this is just going to be additional?
Not that I'm aware, the applicant might have more information on that, uh, but not that I'm aware of. I know that the closest one that, that, that we, we, we looked at was in Laguna Nigal in Ocean Ranch. I don't believe that one plans on consolidating.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions before we move on? With the commissioners for right now, any more questions? All right, then we will open this for public hearing. Uh, we do have one request to speak, and that is from William McCormick. And, uh, with that said, I will read the public comments portion. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request-to-speak form available at the door. The concluded, completed form is to be submitted to the planning commission secretary prior to an individual being heard by the planning commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on the subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. We just have the one, Madam Secretary? All right, thank you. Uh, with that said, Mr. William McCormick, if you would like to step forward, please, and make sure that you speak loudly into the, uh, mic, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, commissioners and, uh, all dedicated Dana Point officers. My name is Bill McCormack, and, uh, my wife and I are the owners of, uh, properties located directly across the street from this project, facing Violet Lantern and Del Prado, and, uh, specifically, three four two one oh, three four two one two, and three four two one four Violet Lantern, and two four six two one, two four six two three, two four six two five, and two four six two seven Del Prado. And, uh, we, uh, oppose the request to permit the use as requested in this, uh, CUP eighteen dash oh oh one four, and we strongly urge all of you planning commissioners to oppose it. Three weeks ago, when I received the notice of this hearing, I contacted all of our tenants, and the majority of them, uh, agree with me in that opposing. They've gone over it very carefully. Uh, I'm sure that all of you are familiar with the Killer Dana Surf Shop location. That's our tenant at the very corner. Uh, a valuable key location, just like this corner at the PCH and Violet Lantern is a key location in the Lantern District Town Center. The CUP application, uh, we feel is not consistent with the requirements, goals, and policies outlined in the Dana Point Town Center Plan, because the plan clearly prohibits office space on the ground level. Approving this application, we feel would establish a precedent. It would open the door to anyone seeking ground-floor office space in the Town Center in the future. This twenty-seven hundred square foot ground-floor corner location in, in the key part of the Town Center's dynamic shopping area has been approved for retail or restaurant use, the ground level, not office use. During the past year, I have turned away approximately twenty potential non-conforming office space tenants that applied at my property, leaving a particular ground-level space vacant for six months before finding a retail tenant with a favorable use that qualified for a certificate of occupancy. Yes, the loss of rent was substantial, very substantial, but I sincerely believe that the Town Center Plan is well-thought-out, won, and my short-term loss will be recaptured over the long run, over time. I, I know all of you have diligently worked, and most of you, many of you worked on that project, and have put forth a lot of effort, uh, toward it. And Rain Tree Del Prado is doing a spectacular job. I, I'm not here tonight to criticize them at all. My feeling is that, though, within a short period of time, they will find a well-qualified conforming retailer or restaurant tenant that is willing to pay substantially more than the prevailing office space rate and be a much better match for this space. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Do any of you have questions for our speaker?
No, but I have a question for staff or the city attorney on just a couple of the comments, just to make sure I understand what the rules are when public, uh, I said we're closing the, the, uh, public comment period?
Yes, we are.
Um, so I guess the first question I have is it, is, are office uses prohibited on the ground floor or the conditional uses? My understanding is they're conditional.
That, that is correct. There are a number of by-right uses, but, um, administrative office, professional offices are conditionally allowed uses on the ground floor in Town Center.
Okay, and they're distinct, right? Aren't banks under one category and office under another category?
Uh, they're distinct office types, administrative office being one that banks fall under. Professional office is another use, uh, which is, uh, like, associated with architects, planners, things along those lines.
All right, thank you. So, just one more quick question. So if the, uh, gentleman who spoke about his properties had office uses, they could come in and do this, ask for a conditional use permit?
I think that, that there's a distinction between what kind of office use you're talking about. What staff has done is use their discretion to make an interpretation that when you're looking at a bank, there's an administration part of the bank, and there's effectively a retail part of the bank. You know, when you think of retail, it's, you know, people are coming in, interacting with, uh, salespeople effectively, uh, coming and going. When you think about the Town Center Plan, the idea is to have this environment where you have a pedestrian sort of friendly environment, where you don't have people coming in. Like, if you come into a law office, you come in, you sit down, you're there for, you know, maybe hours at a time in a closed setting. Um, it's, that's a true office environment. If you're coming and going to an ATM machine, or you're coming in to cash a check, that's more of an in-and-out use, where people might drive, park their car, go to the bank, go to the grocery store, you, you know, kind of running errands, that sort of an environment. And as the staff indicated in the report before, the nature of banking has changed over time. So the administrative functions that historically existed are typically done in a more centralized location. One of the interesting things about the staff interpretation, I thought, when they explained this to me, was that the design criteria for the Town Center, uh, is able to be accomplished with this design. Um, so you have, like, you walk into this big, open, uh, um, high-ceiling foyer kind of a feel, big lobby kind of a feel. If you go to a typical office, you're not going to have that. You're going to have partitions, um, you know, maybe cubicles, maybe private offices. You're not going to have that kind of big, open, big, you know, window, uh, to the, to the street kind of a view. So, uh, there was a discretionary determination here that this is more akin to a retail use than a traditional administrative use. As we said before, and, and so, first of all, it's conditionally permitted, and in light of, uh, those kinds of, of, um, issues, staff made the, uh, interpretation that, you know, it, it really is an appropriate use. Taking a step further, um, when we get to the, the question of the forty-foot setback, that becomes significant, because the only time there would be a prohibition is if you have the use within the setback. If you look at the setback from PCH, if that's how it would be applied, the administrative parts of the use are beyond that setback. And I think that probably the more appropriate, um, interpretation is that since there's not a frontage on PCH, that prohibition doesn't apply in any event. So, you know, all those kind of components went into the staff, uh, recommendation, that this is something that, that they could support.
Thank you.
Feister?
I don't have any specific questions. I, I guess I view this as a convenience for the retail customers, so they can, uh, use the ATM machine, so the merchants that have retail stores can get change, so people can cash checks. So I, I see this as a retail element, not an office element, and I am, uh, favorable, favorably disposed towards this project.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Opal? Any questions?
I have no questions, but I, I do, um, agree with the other commissioners that, that the banking industry has changed, and this does seem to be more of a retail than an administrative function for this space.
Thank you, Commissioner McCon?
Uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think they call it retail banking for a reason, and it is, you know, much more retail than maybe historically banking has been. I think that staff should consider, um, if, if, if banking fits in an administrative office kind of category, if they need to possibly look at... kind of category, if they need to possibly look at putting it in a retail category. I understand Mr. McCormack and his wife were opposed to this. I, for what it's worth, didn't really quite understand why, other than maybe a perceived non-compliance with the document. But in any event, I agree, I think it's more retail, and it'll be a nice addition to the area, and I'll be in support of this.
I agree, and I thank the council for the clarification on some of these issues.
Yeah, and, you know, just to kind of get back to the more pointed question that was asked of me, this is not precedent-setting in the sense that any office use could now occur. This is a conditional approval. You're having to exercise your discretion in the determination that this sort of fits in terms of like the intent of Town Center, and that it's going to be okay. If, at this exact location, someone had come in and wanted to put in a lawyer's office or an accountant's office, absent, I think, exceptional circumstances like the ones we're looking at now, you would have the right to say no.
Thank you. I agree with the other four council commissioners, and having listened to their discussion, and I would vote in favor, so.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCormick, I would say that the Dana, Killer Dana is a wonderful place in Dana Point. It's a landmark location, and the new retail uses, Sea and Sky, have been a great addition. So, thank you for, for your contribution.
Yes, thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just real quickly, because I always just ask in questions, I didn't provide any of my own commentary. I went back and went through our Town Center Plan, and one of the interesting things, you know, when you go back and look at these things, is our role is to administer this plan, whether we were part of the group that put it together, or, you know, where we're at today, we're down the line, and we're trying to understand what their goals were. And the first goal that is in this plan is that Town Center becomes a primary business district, and I don't, I can't imagine a business district with banking that didn't exist. I do appreciate the comment letter, and I can only hope that the gentleman who wrote it, if he's got tenants that want to be in here, comes in and talks to staff, because we'd hate to lose operators that are good for this town. And I think this corner and this location with the setback is appropriate. If you look at our policies that follow that same goal, policy 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3 are all discussing how to encourage businesses on, in the district that encourage pedestrian activity. And one way you do that is have people have to get out of their cars instead of driving up to their ATM. So there's some opportunities here to create traffic, and a lot of traffic, and I think this does that. So for that reason, and the fact that it, you know, stated earlier, potentially does not even need a required CUP, or that 40-foot setback doesn't apply because of frontage, I'm in full support of this project.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner. Any further comments? Commissioner McCon.
I would just like to echo Commissioner Donner's comment about Killer Dana and your other retail uses there. They are well-trafficked and loved, and beloved by the community, so we thank you for, you know, supporting those uses.
Commissioner Obol? I have no further. All right. Closing the comment, is there a motion to take a vote?
I'd like to make a motion.
You could read the motion, please.
I move that we approve conditional use permit CUP 18-0014 to permit the establishment of an administrative office retail use bank on the ground floor of a building within the boundaries of the Dana Point Town Center Plan, located at 34155 Pacific Coast Highway Suite A.
Thank you.
I would second that.
Thank you for the second. All right, I guess this is another hand vote, all those in favor of passing it through. All right. Thank you, five to zero, and thank you again, sir. Now, we have reached, I think that's the end of our, nope, now we get to go to the fun stuff, going to number five on our agenda, and that is Mr. Zorn's, which is an old business.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. Tonight's topic covers the establishment of the SIGN program for the mixed-use development known as Prado West within the city's Town Center. This slide shows the project location. The subject property is located on Pacific Coast Highway and Del Prado Avenue, between Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern, within the Town Center Mixed Use District. This slide shows the current construction site at the Pacific Coast Highway and Amber Lantern Street intersection. You probably are all familiar with the recent walls that are being erected at the Building Two site, as well as what's going on on the Building Three site. The current rendering now represents the proposed tenant identification wall sign locations that are proposed. There are a possible 22 separate primary tenant identification sign locations proposed. Each primary tenant identification sign is allowed one square foot for each lineal foot of frontage. There are possible eight separate tenant identification marquee blade signs, which is actually what is indicated as the larger hot pink, if you can make out the color, to the left end of the rendering. Those are actually meant to activate the major corners of the development by creating an additional signage opportunity for the corner tenants, which are also, in some regard, a flagship of the development, because they are going to probably be more likely the bigger square footage tenants. There are detailed table information in regards to all frontages on page seven of your plan sets that are provided to you. Additionally, on this rendering, this represents the tenant identification signage that is proposed in regards to some specific examples that have been acknowledged throughout the SIGN program that is presented to you today. Tenants will each be allowed one primary wall or canopy sign. Signage options are as follows: individual letters with halo illumination, or individual letter externally illuminated; individual letters with exposed lighting, which is what is shown in the middle of this current slide; and the behind-the-glass, which you can see identified on a later slide. Corner tenants only, as stated previously, will be allowed one marquee blade sign, as designated on the precise SIGN location plan, page eight on your provided plan sets. The signage options are as follows: the marquee blade signs are designed to be perpendicular from the building, with a dual face visible from each side, and can also be mounted at a 90-degree angle from the corner edge of the building face, in order to provide optimal visibility in the public realm. To continue on, the current rendering shows some further options of the tenant identification signage that is proposed. There are a possible 17 separate identification blade sign locations. These are another primary type of signage that is required of tenants when coming into the development. Each is allowed a maximum of six square feet, and there are additionally on this particular rendering is the separate 22 different tenant identification canvas awning signs. Those are essentially an alternative to utilizing the wall space above the storefronts, or the already fabricated and installed during construction completion of the development of the metal canopies that will be around the property. Again, some current examples that are shown throughout your SIGN program. Tenants will each be allowed one blade sign projecting. Signage options are as follows: that allows a fabricated sign to be made of metal or sealed wood, with the optional cove lighting, or lighting mounted to the storefront and directed to shine onto the blade sign. There is a minimum headroom that we would like to acknowledge, that is a minimum of eight feet above the finished floor from at any point of the development. Tenants will be allowed an optional signage alternative to the wall-mounted signage, as I previously had mentioned on the last slide, which will be the alternative utilizing a canvas awning, which will allow logo and copy branding, but only on the valence component of the canvas awning. The current rendering represents additional proposed tenant identification signage. There are a possible 21 separate tenant ID signs that would be allowed as window signs, two-window maximum within each suite, and each of the signs that would be allowed for window coverage would be a maximum of two square feet. There is also then the ratio, which is a 25% ratio value for each individual window or door that it would be applied to. There are a possible 22 commercial tenant wall-mounted plaque signs. These are going to be shown on the next slide, which would be adjacent essentially to any of the entry doors of each individual tenant. And then there are the seven live-work space units, which any tenant that has one of those would be allowed to mount one of the wall-mounted plaques near their location door area, and that would be a maximum of one square foot per plaque. This slide gives you a better indication of what those plaques might look like. As previously stated, each tenant would be allowed one of these, whether or not it would be utilized as just an identification stating the name, almost similar to like what some hotels or significantly, historically significant properties might have seen around town. But in regards to anything that would be a restaurant use, the, to take advantage and keep, create a little bit of a cohesive element throughout the property, they will be allowed to architecturally integrate into the building facade a menu board of their desired style that would apply and be appropriate for the site. Moving on to the building identification signs, these are the medallion-like design, which is going to encompass the development name, which we all have come to know as Prado West, so you will see the PW initials predominantly as what's visible, but then below it, it will state Prado West throughout all of the signage that would be on-site. There is an alternative to this, that they will both be fabricated out of metal. One will be painted fully to be a bronze-brass look of sorts, and then the other will have a wood, faux wood element to it as well. The current rendering represents further proposed property identification signage. Two leasing office identity window sign, or door signs rather, are proposed and would be finished in a gold leaf applied to the glass. Signage is to state the development name, PW Prado West, hours of operation, and website. There are three identity blade signs that would be mounted around the property. Signage is to be the initials PW for Prado West, fabricated out of an aluminum cut metal, and finished in that same brass-bronze paint finish that you will see throughout the SIGN package for building identification signage. The current rendering represents the proposed building directional signage. Four parking entrance identification signs are proposed. Signage is to be flush-mounted overhead to the building facade at the entrance of the onsite parking garages, which are accessible from Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern Street. Additionally, the proposed parking entrance identification signs are located on the rear or alley side of the buildings to provide directional signage for vehicular traffic once they have entered into the alleyway. The parking entrance identification signs is designed to be fabricated from a metal and finished with a brass-bronze finish. Sign size is to be one foot five inches in height and 17 feet two inches long. Once a vehicle has entered into the public alleyway and passed through the building, the overhead building area, the additional parking entrance identification sign on the alley side of each building on Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern will help guide vehicular traffic to the additional onsite parking, or to allow them to exit the alleyway and the Prado West development altogether. There is also indicated on this particular rendering that there are two parking entry blade signs that are proposed. The signage is to be, for the project, for the building to be perpendicular to Amber Lantern Street and Violet Lantern Street. The parking entry blade signs is to state parking, with a directional arrow to the onsite parking garage, and resident and public parking to be stated below. The overall parking entry blade sign to be six feet 10 inches in overall height, and is to be fabricated from metal and finished with brass-bronze and off-white paint. Acrylic push-through letters and directional arrow is to be internally illuminated with LED lights for visibility in the evening time. The intent of the projecting parking entry blade signs is to easily identify the onsite parking garages for resident and public parking by vehicular traffic from Amber Lantern and from Violet Lantern. The current rendering represents the proposed parking directional signs. The directional signs are identified with red stars. These directional signs are projecting and are proposed to act as a guide from major points of the development, once people are in the immediate vicinity. Signage is, to the projects from the building, is perpendicular on Pacific Coast Highway, out the southwest corner of Amber Lantern; Pacific Coast Highway at the southwest corner of Violet Lantern; Del Prado Avenue at the northeast corner of Amber Lantern; and Del Prado Avenue at the northwest corner of Violet Lantern. Overall parking directional signs is to be two feet two inches, and to be fabricated from the same finishes of the parking entry, which is metal and finished in a brass-bronze and off-white paint, with the acrylic push-through letters and directional arrows to be internally illuminated, again, for visibility in the evening time. The intent of the projecting parking directional signs is to easily identify that there is onsite parking garages visible by traffic from Pacific Coast Highway and Del Prado Avenue, and to provide wayfinding and to guide the traffic to the onsite parking garages, which then will be identified by a projecting parking entry blade sign. The one mural for the parking entry is proposed onsite. This is going to be located at the entrance into parking garage under building number two, which is off of Amber Lantern. The parking entry is to be graphically painted onto the interior parking garage wall with gray and black paint. The entry mural will be visible by the vehicular traffic once they have entered the alleyway, and will guide them to the subterranean parking garage for public and resident onsite parking. The current rendering represents the directory signage for the approved parking onsite, pursuant residential use and number 14102103. Parking stalls for the residential guest and commercial uses on the site shall also be identified specifically, and shall be identified to state that they will be open to the public parking and not restricted to the project's customers only. The proposed SIGN program shows that the overall development will satisfy this requirement during the onsite building directional signage implementation. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed SIGN program would provide a visually attractive and consistent sign theme to the building. The signage would constitute an enhancement to the overall building while providing signage opportunities for all tenants. Staff accordingly supports the proposed SIGN program and recommends approval of SPP 180003. Staff and the project applicant are both present to respond to any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zornz. All right, back to, does somebody, anybody have any questions for Mr. Zornz?
Madam Chair, I do have a quick question. On the live-work signage?
Yes.
Is there, maybe the applicant may have to answer this question, is there a specific reason blade signs aren't allowed to?
I will deviate to Alan with Rain Tree. Was there any specific reason?
Hi, good evening. To answer your question, no, there wasn't any specific reason why.
Okay, so, I'll probably talk about this during our thing, but you wouldn't have an issue with allowing blade signs? Doesn't mean they have to be put up, but if we had the right to do that, you wouldn't have an issue?
Yeah, we could, yeah, that could be an option, and really, Nick did a great job presenting, but, you know, what, what we have is a tenant criteria based off the tenant that ends up occupying the space. Really, they have the flexibility to choose, pick and choose what they want.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Is the signage, the...
Is the signage, the hours of operation on the windows, is that part of the total signage allowed? Or is that, is that separate?
I think the hours of operation, I believe it's on the windows, is that correct?
It is on the windows, Chairman, and is actually, it is not included into the overall calculation for window signage. If they were to go to above a certain threshold, then we would constitute that as something to be appropriate and calculated into their overall allowable square footage.
So there, so there's a maximum?
Essentially, there's, there's an appropriate threshold, if, if it looks and smells like a duck, it talks like a duck, it is a duck. So we'll review it on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Oble? No questions. Commissioner McCann?
Thank you, I have, I have a couple of questions. I noticed on the, and I'm not quite sure who directed this, the staff or the applicant, but I noticed that some of the, like the blade signs had a minimum ten feet minimum height clearance underneath. And then there was like the building logo signage, the PW, and that had like a, like a lower AFF of seven feet. And I'm just thinking about, and so I was noticing that it was kind of lower, significantly lower and what I would consider touchable, because my kids can't seem to walk by any entrance or through any door jam without jumping up and touching it. So I just thought they were kind of potentially prone to breakage from, you know, kids doing like that all the time. So I was wondering if there was any thought given to raising those or why those were lower, closer to the pedestrian. That was one question. And then my other question was, on the one-square-foot signage for the live-works, I didn't know if that was a requirement or that comes kind of like a self-imposed suggestion that you wanted to go with. It seemed a little bit small to me, or that it could be bigger without being intrusive visually. So those are my two questions.
I can go ahead and answer that. So above finished floor, I do not see anywhere, Commissioner, anywhere that it is lower than eight feet for a projecting sign over the public right-of-way. Eight feet is the requirement by the Public Works Department and has been reviewed by the Director of Public Works. There are mentions to above-finished floor for signage that would be parallel to the public realm, but is flush mounted to walls. So if there is something that was missed in the review of the plans, we definitely can make that modification. There has been a, a condition of approval that is to make sure that every, all projecting signs into the public right-of-way do meet the criteria and is acceptable by the Director of Public Works. So that is kind of a catch-all to protect us with any potential flexibility in the sign program. What you might be noticing for the main marquee signage that you might be referring to for the above-finished floor of ten feet, that is to be able to create some visual and articulation architecturally with signage in order to play with the levels of what is going to be approved for possible tenant signage as it comes in. So that's, I mean, a little bit of where that kind of play on size and sign types will come into play.
Thank you. I, I could have sworn that on one of the the slides that you presented had that PW building logo. Yeah, here it is. Page forty-six. So I don't know, it's just a suggestion. I mean, if they get broken, I'm hoping that the applicant fixes them on a regular basis and hopefully they won't get broken. So, and was there any discussion of the one-square-foot for the live-work?
That is not something that the City of Dana Point limited on the applicant. We do feel as staff that we would support kind of the mixture of not having blade signs going down all street frontages. It does kind of create a little bit of a visual break. And also the live-work units are going to be somewhat subordinate to the other commercial uses. Most likely, a lot of live-work units as, you know, is in other developments throughout other regions of the state and the country. Live-work units really aren't something that's typically open as long as a typical major commercial use.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right, does that, anyone else wish to speak before we close the public hearing? I gather this is a public hearing, even though we have no public? Question, okay, we go to the public hearing. We don't have public hearing.
It's not technically a public hearing, it's just a public comment section of the new business.
Right, okay. So, any more comments by the commissioners? All right, then we'll close that and since we, this is for council. All right, we will move on to commissioners' comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, I gotta tell you, this is a really nice job. It's really an amazing amount of detail in here and given the flexibility and the criteria, you know, I can't imagine anything other than just a really nice village. So appreciate that. I do have one concern after reading, going back and reading our Lantern District Plan, Town Center Plan. It focused heavily on the walkability. And I would hate to miss an opportunity along that street because you really have your bookend in it with two buildings that have pretty substantial signage. And then all the way down the street is all live-work. That if I have a live-work space and I want to advertise mildly, the only way I can attract tenants is on the glass or on the side of the building without projecting at all. And I think the creativity of this plan and the unique nature of that village, adding that element or the ability to add signage if wanted would be a benefit for the businesses that would occupy those uses. So I would add that to this project as a condition that they modify that, that page or that, those units to allow for either or. So they can have a window sign or they can have a blade sign, they don't get both. I don't, I don't want to have too much signage down there, but they should have the, in my opinion, the right to attract their customers the way they feel fit. And if we want to encourage walkability, I think making a street interesting is one way to do that and doing that with signage is certainly easy to do. So that would be, you know, my, I'm going to support this one way or the other, but I would make a motion if everybody's in support that we would approve it with that condition in place. Those are my comments. Actually, that's not a motion, that will be a mo, that would be a motion.
Is there a second for the motion?
Well, I don't want to make a motion until everybody has their ability to comment, so I'll leave it at that.
Vice Chair?
I, I agree. I think it's a first, first-class and it's going to be a great addition. The signage, I do agree with Commissioner McCann that the seven-foot might be a little short for the, the one sign. So I would say the eight-foot should probably be the minimum. But I think it's a, it's a great, great wayfinding and the, the signage. And I, I appreciate the fact that they're not oversigning.
Thank you, Commissioner Oble.
I appreciate the thought that went into the putting this package together. I think it will provide a very cohesive and consistent signage program for the site, but also allow for flexibility with your individual tenants not knowing who they are yet. So I'm fully in support of it.
All right, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yeah, I had two thoughts when I was reviewing this. One is, wow, this is fantastic. And two, man, I'm glad I'm not a sign designer because I would either be very tired or very failed because my work wouldn't come close to this. So I, I think it's, it's a really, you know, very thorough and detailed plan and, and very well presented. I think it'll really, you know, make this project just all the more some icing on the cake with the really kind of high-quality signage that's, that's being proposed. So I'm in support of that. I'm in support of Commissioner Nelson's, you know, mentioned comment regarding more flexibility on the live-work signage. And if there's a desire to raise that to eight-foot minimum AFF on the, that other signage on page forty-six. With that, I'll let someone else enter a motion.
Great. Well, I think also to add, your son shouldn't be jumping up knocking signs loose, but talk to them after hours, of course. That's true. I guess a short guy like me, I have seven feet, I can't touch that, so. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
Eric?
I would just like to make a couple of comments. Having read this, I was very much blown away at work that was put in this. I, I think you have done a masterful job, the whole, obviously, the whole staff has done a masterful job. This could not have been easy and it could have been very tedious. It's, it's, what you have presented here to me is, is a good reflection of Dana Point, people coming to Dana Point, just to see the detail and, you know, the great art that's going to be there instead of your usual little arrow signs and that. And it's, it, it, it's, it's very tasteful, all of these signs, why, you know, I looked them all over very carefully. And they blend well and it's really in the best interest for Rain Tree even, to make this the best possible product they can. And this is a good, wonderful start with these signs. You did a great job. Appreciate it. All right, are there any motions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve. Sign permit SPP eighteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-three for the multi-tenant mixed-use buildings located at, is this the right one? I'm sorry. The right agenda? Yes, okay. Located at three-five-one-three-five, three-four-one-three-seven and three-four-one-five-five Pacific Coast Highway. With two changes or two conditions, everyone would word that, that one, blade signs would be allowed as an alternative on the live-work units. And then two, that all signage be at an eight-foot minimum above finished floor. Because Scott's kids are going to be running around town, I think. That would be my motion.
Second?
All right. Ready to, to vote? Receive with the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's a resounding aye again. So thank you for all that hard work, sir. And that, I think that is the end, except for going on to, let me go back. That's where I'm going. I just want to make sure you guys know where you're going. Huh? Staff, yeah. No, we're getting here. All right, staff reports.
Just one quick announcement.
Which staff, though?
Our next meeting scheduled for December third will be held at the Community Center. It had been requested by some members of the neighboring the project, it's for the St. Edwards Church project. They wanted a facility that could accommodate members of the community. And so that'll begin at six o'clock. It's been a while since we've been meeting over there. I will email out at some point during the week, we typically reserve a room for you guys to gather before the meeting, so I'll let you know where that'll be. And that's all I had tonight.
All right, Commissioner comments?
Well, I would like to make a comment. Kurt Nelson, Sean Nicholas, John Pampa, and Danny Giamani, Nick Zorn. What a fantastic job. I, I mean, when I read the package and looked at all the details and found so few questions because of the completed staff work, it made, makes our job so much easier. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I second Commissioner Donner's comment wholeheartedly. And it kind of leads to, to a comment that I had, which is, when Ursula attended her resignation, I met with the city manager and I told him, I said that, you know, her position is really a critical position and that, you know, we don't have a design review board, but we consistently get really, really great design and product that we see that comes to us. And that I said, we need someone really strong in Ursula's position. And I'm super happy that, that Matt was appointed to that position because he's the guy that we needed there. So that's a reflection of, of Matt and also of the, you know, the, the strength of the planning staff that's, that's been, you know, consistently grinding applicants to get, get us good stuff. So I just want to commend and thank that.
Commissioner Oble? Yeah, I completely agree with all those comments. We are very, very fortunate. And, you know, look at these guys. Every one of them is just a master at what they do. And this is no easy project, particularly this particular project with, so, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Anything else?
May the applicant speak one more time briefly?
Yes. I didn't realize you were there, I am very sorry.
Oh, no worries. I haven't met many of you, so I just want to introduce myself. I'm Jason Check, I'm the Managing Director for Rain Tree Partners and our development team. And I appreciate all the commentary and hard work from staff in particular. Kurt, I know has received many late-night emails from me and Alan and has always responded. And really appreciate that. And tonight was the first of many hearings you'll probably see for our project coming up very soon as we bring tenants in for you to review. And we are just really excited about seeing this project come around and starting to bring tenants in. That'll really help reinvigorate downtown. And we recently just opened up our office in downtown Dana Point as well, just above Bearcoast Coffee, which is our first tenant and our new office building. So our headquarters is now in Dana Point and you are all welcome to come stop by and say hello anytime. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and we're very happy that you're local now and we can find you. All right, any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So you're in charge.
Oh, well then, okay. I thought you, somebody might, all right. We are adjourned and thank you again for everybody.